Okay, we'll go ahead and start the Ford County Commission meeting. This is meeting January 3rd, 2023. This is meeting 2023-01. We have all three commissioners in attendance. And we'll start off with a prayer followed by a pledge allegiance. And we have Pastor Albert Schrock of Bible Baptist Church here. There he is.
Good to be here. My voice isn't that real good. You might.
Perfect.
Our heavenly Father, we come, we're thankful, Lord, for your blessings on us, Lord. But thank you, Lord, for these county commissioners, Lord. I pray that you give them guidance, Lord, as they help guide our county, Lord, wisdom, Lord, in this meeting. I pray your blessing in meeting. And we just ask that you be with our city and our county, Lord. We ask you in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Happy New Year. Thank you very much.
Okay, so we have in front of us information from Stiefel on the engagement relating to them and consulting services. And maybe use them for a while, but it looks like our agreement needs to be redone on this meeting. So I make a motion to amend the agenda to add for the Stiefel engagement consulting services contract.
I would second the motion. Where do you want to put that in?
Probably at the end is fine. Do you want to do it under CFA, probably right after?
Okay.
So with the motion seconded, I'll go ahead and call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. So in front of us is the consent agenda. I believe the only thing on it is a syrup malt beverage license in the name of Andrew De La Torre doing business as Rancho Santa Fe LLC.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second it.
Okay, with the motion seconded, I'll go ahead and call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, there are no claims, so we're at the point where there's open public comment. Please limit it to 15 minutes per, or sorry, five minutes per individual, 15 minutes per topic. Final action may be deferred until the next county commissioner, unless an emergency situation does exist. So the microphone is open. If you want to approach and talk to the commissioner, you're welcome to.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to speak. I want to wish all you, all you people there a very Happy New Year and from the Snuck family. And if you need something, call me. I don't know if I can help you or not, but I'll try my best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Put them on speed dial. Good. All right, moving on. We have no unfinished business, no legal counsel. So we'll move into the county administrator's report.
First item I have on the agenda is the Ford County Engineer Report. And we have the Ford County Engineer here in person.
I have him in person.
Good afternoon and Happy New Year to all of you as well. Good afternoon. Got a few items to report upon for county engineer activities. Talked about the Highway 50 project wet between Dodge City and Simron. The asphalt paving has been shut down for the winter. And you'll still see some activities out there, continuing to build box culverts, building the retaining wall, the point of rocks, and the moving, the earthwork and removing rock that's in the half of the construction. The Hellmark Cheese Plant road improvement projects on 112 and Outlaw Road. That project was bid by KDOT as well as the intersection improvements at US 56 and US 283, middle of December. I would anticipate since the county is participating in the funding of the county road improvements that KDOT would send some kind of correspondence to the county with the bid amounts and the anticipated match that the county will put up. Chris and I did talk with the project manager for KDOT this afternoon to test base. It's only been a couple of weeks since the bids and with the holidays and everything, it's kind of a challenging time to get things done in a real quick fashion. He said that he would check into, there's kind of multiple departments within KDOT working on this project. So the person really that's in charge of the funding, he said if he didn't hear from them by the end of this week, he would check in with them to find out what's going on and let us know what's KDOT's plan of attack for approving the bids. The bids did come in over the industry estimate on both projects, so there'd be some overage in the funds there. So we just need to find out what is the county's share going to be and make sure that that's fits within the county's financial needs. Off System Bridge 97, that's an active project that's being partially funded through the KDOT local bridge improvement program from last year. I brought in permits for the Corps of Engineers and Department of Agriculture, State Department of Agriculture, for road bridges to sign. And the core permit does not require any fee. Department of Ag will require a $500 permit fee based on the drainage area coming out of the structure. So once the check is acquired for road bridge, for road bridge, both those permits will get submitted and we can get the permit review process started. Still looking towards a spring bid date on that project along with the 127 low water crossing. I don't have anything to update right currently on the 113 road project. We discussed that at length in the last time I was here with the changes that the commissioners requested, working on a engineering change order to implement those changes. And I plan on bringing that to, to the meeting in February when I'm here, first meeting of February. The Jewel Road Reclamation Project, we've been discussing that for a while after the pavement was completed in later part of 20, later part of the summer of 2021. And so cracking was exhibited. We did a bunch of, I shouldn't say we, Terricon took the lead to do a bunch of testing on the pavement, came with, with recommendations on how to address that. Sent that to APAC with what we saw as recommendations to address the cracks and hadn't heard anything in a while. So Chris and I did meet with representatives of APAC this morning and asked for them to come up with the response by the end of the month so we can get this moving forward and try to get to closure. And what we'd recommended is that there were some areas that the asphalt thickness was deficient. We asked for them or suggested they place some additional asphalt paving in those locations and then seal the remainder of the project to fill in the cracks and seal off those cracks. To date, we had not received any response that they're going to do what they asked for and come up with another proposal or anything. So anyway, we really need to get something moving on this so we can get this project moving to closure. The 123 road timber culvert replacement, Chris had gotten bids approved through the commissioners for the pipe culverts to replace that timber structure. And he said he's expecting delivery of the culverts in the next one to two weeks. And just as soon as they are certain that the culverts, the metal culverts are on their way to delivery, they will go in and start removing the old bridge and preparing the creek bottom for installing those pipe culverts. And all the permits have been approved from, from the core, from the State Department of Ag, so we are ready to roll as soon as those culverts get here. The US 50 access road maintenance agreement with KDOT, the commissioners approved that agreement last time I was here in December. The agreement was forwarded on the KDOT. We're just waiting now for KDOT to execute their end of it and send it back for the record. The last couple of items I got here, the Iron Star Wind Farm project, which construction had been completed on several months ago. I did confirm with Chris and Glenn that NG has finished their part of making payments to the county reimbursing them for the costs of engineering and whatnot on the project. And they feel like they've fulfilled their obligation of fixing up any road damage is that that project is closed out and then removed off my notes after this meeting. Pioneer Creek Wind Farm, sounds like the wind farm is anticipated to be in the county next month to meet with, planning a zoning department to start discussing getting that project moving forward. So we'll find out next month what, what they have in mind. Going down my list here, we submitted two bridges to the KDOT Local Bridge Improvement Project funding this fall. That was Off System Bridges 50 and 120. Those are two bridges that were posted for load and over 90 years old. Unfortunately, neither of them got selected this round, but there are four more years of enhanced funding from KDOT on this, on these two programs or on this particular program as well as Off System Bridge. So we'll anticipate to submit them again and keep, keep applying. With the amount of funding that KDOT has, we anticipate that they, they would get selected in those five-year window. And we'll keep submitting on those. And in the meantime, the county had approved design contract with Kirk and Michael to go ahead and get started on the survey and design. So we'll get those projects at least through the field check, about 50% planned development stage, so we can show to KDOT that they are shovel-ready projects. If they were to be selected, they could be implemented pretty quick. That'll, that'll help the opportunity to get them selected going forward.
Where are those located, Sean? You know where 50 or 101 is?
Let's see. I had that in my notes.
Look it up in the bridge report. Should we still got it?
Yeah, it was on my, I got that in my bag. It was in my previous report, I think where those are at.
That's right.
Just might remember off the top of my head. Off System 50 and 101.
50 on the 120 road between Anne Lope and Back Trail.
Okay.
And 101 was over like on 134 Road over by Wind Horse.
Pretty far from each other.
Yeah.
Anything as far as active things, the other things I have in my notes were the things that were in the past and just kind of waiting to see how they play out. Some, some items dealing with KDOT, the railroad crossing on 400 near Cargill. And we put in a request to KDOT on the highway junction of 50 and West White Ear coming south of the casino, where there have been a couple of recent accidents. And KDOT did put those into their traffic engineering division to evaluate them for safety enhancements. It'll be a while, I'm sure, before we get to anything. It takes time to evaluate the intersections, study them, compare them to design standards, and come back with recommendations. So we'll keep everybody apprised as soon as we hear something there. Final item I would mention then is the pavement maintenance study that Chris has been working with, Keith Browning at KEC. I believe he does have a report that he will share with the commissioners on it here in February.
Okay.
On the maintenance study. Now, so that, my next meeting would be here February 6th, the first meeting of the, of the month. And I plan to be in attendance at the township panel meeting on the 15th of February as well. I'd be happy to entertain any questions if there are any.
I don't have any. On the Pioneer, no, I'm sorry. Let me get back to the rack project here. On the Jewel Road, all the county financial obligations are already met there as far as?
We were actually still withholding, we were still withholding retainage on the project against the contractor.
Okay.
So as part of the contract, that was retained as held until the project was complete. And at this point, we have not paid that retainage. I, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head how much that is.
Okay.
But it's 10, 30,000-ish. Is that right? Around 30,000 maybe.
Okay.
Until the project is completed and satisfactory.
Okay, I was just curious where, what exactly our stance was as far as negotiating point there, so.
Okay, we still have a few cards in our hand.
And there's still the one-year, once, even once we do sign off on it and the retainage is paid in the contract, there's a one-year warranty on work.
Okay. I would, it would seem to me they'd want to get that clock started as soon as possible.
We're, we're trying to nudge them along so we can get this thing buttoned up. It'd be in everybody's best interest to close the books and get it netted up, but we want a product that's going to stand up as well. Any other questions, gentlemen?
No further questions.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just taking it easy on me the first year.
Thank you, Dave. My, my, for me.
Hopefully we'll do so. Appreciate it.
Gentlemen, wish you Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Safe for you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Next item I have is for communications is the Kansas 911 Coordinating Council handle package. Michael Brown is here to present that for us.
Before you, it was our annual bill for our call handling package for 911 to provide 911 services to Kansas.
The only question I have on this was when you look at the five quantity, why, why is there a number associated with that? Is it, is it?
We have five consoles in our center.
Okay.
So five.
So just per?
It's, yeah, five 18,000 per console that we have.
Okay.
Commissioners, I'd make a motion to approve the 2023 Kansas 911 Coordinating Council Call Handling Base and Soft Phone Package.
I second it.
All right, with motion seconded, any further discussion on this? Hearing none, I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Third item is for the Medic 2 remount for EMS. And we have Chief Boy here to walk us through that.
Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Hi, Chief.
Leaving, you should have in front of you a quote from Emergency Services Supply. This is the company that built all of our ambulances and has been customary in the past. We're at the stage where we're able to remount these trucks instead of buying new. Pricing a new truck right now from top to bottom is about a quarter million dollars. So we're seeing a pretty substantial savings by being able to remount. What we're asking for is to keep proceeding with that project and remount our last V10 that we had, so.
And what's it move up to?
It'll have the big gas motor, but it won't be a V10. And it's been okay, but it doesn't matter to see what that you have.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion, we approve the 20, I'm sorry. I'd make a motion that we approve the purchase agreement with Osage Ambulance Emergency Services Supply for the Medic 2 remount.
I second it.
All right. With motion seconded, any further discussion on the vehicle?
Chief, this box that we're putting on there now, is this the second vehicle it's been on or?
Correct.
How, how many times we think we're able to redo this?
We're hoping for four.
Okay.
When, when these trucks come back from the factory and, and now I'll invite you all out, we just got one a month and a half, two months ago, got it back. Can't even tell it's a yours truck. They redo the floors, all the cabinetry, the sliding glass in it is all redone, reworked, new air conditioner units in the back. Yeah, it is.
Wow.
And those are the things in the past that have given people trouble.
Sure.
So they replace all the components and it's just like a brand-new truck when it comes. It's repainted on the outside, all the scratches, tree marks, whatever else we did was covered up, you know? So they look brand new.
They put any shocks on them?
They have liquid filled suspension.
When I rode to the hospital.
Now, the city of Dodge was in here just a second ago. Talks about the roads a little bit. And the good news is we've got three four-wheel drives that with any luck, we're going to be able to skip next year and maybe even a year after without having to do this because they're diesels, they're trucks, and they should last 10 years each. The problem with gas trucks is that 80,000 miles or more out. So then this will be, be right in that area, if not more, by the time it goes through now.
When do you plan on putting this in?
We're hoping about summertime we're going in.
Okay.
All year long, I've waited on a chance like that.
All right, so we have a motion in seconds. I'll go ahead and call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
The next item I have is for HR Director Pat Heckey for the US Alliance Group Life Insurance renewal.
Good afternoon. This is the group life insurance that the county pays for, for the county employees. There is no increase. It's the same as it has been. And sadly, we have had a couple of claims in the last year or so, so it has been helpful to those people.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the 2023 US Alliance Group Life Insurance Policy as presented.
I second it.
Okay, we have motion seconded. Any further discussion on it? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
We have Assistant City Manager Melissa McCoy here to talk to us about the CFA organizational funding recommendations.
Good afternoon.
You're welcome.
Thanks to me.
You're welcome.
So here today to present to you all the CFA recommendations for organizational funding for 2023. So we received a total of five grant applications for funding tolling $131,322.90. And we have available 110,000. And the CFA board met on December 20th and recommended approval of the following. And I'll, I'll just say to start with, to not go over each and all of the, the numbers is that each one of the entities provided their required 20% match that's here. And so I'll, I'll go over what the request was, what the recommendation was, and what the, what the funding was, was for. The first request from the Dodge City Area Arts Council, or folks might be more familiar with them as the Carnegie Center for the Arts, and their request was $12,064.80. That was for insurance and salary and wages, and we're recommending 12,000. The Dodge City Roundup, their request was for 50,000, and we were recommending 43,945. That was to, for contestant payout as well as replacing eight rows of the south grandstand seats that are in poor condition. The next was the Kansas Teachers Hall of Fame. Their request was $13,520.68, and the recommended amount was for 13,000. That was for utilities, insurance, and their security system. The next one is the Ford County Historical Society. Their request was for $19,537.42. I'd like to explain on this one is that part of their request was also for matching funds for the statue for Dennis Hopper as well as for a storyboard for Bat Masterson. The city found that we have the, we have separate funds available to pay and provide those matching funds. And we've notified the Ford County Historical Society of that. That way we could free up additional funds for the grants. And so their recommended amount was $9,055. And so that would be for computer software programs, some technology upgrades, as well as their home stone operations. And then the last one was the Young Guns Association. Their request was for $36,200. We're recommending $32,000, and that was for insurance and their wages for judges, secretary, timer, announcers for five different events. So the proposal is based on the amount of available funding that we have. Of course, the total amount of funding for organizational funding is the 710,000 with the 600,000 that's split between the city and the county. And of course, to qualify for this, it needs to be any Kansas nonprofit with a tax-exempt corporation, organization, and principal offices here in Ford County. And so these recommendations, they meet the criteria of the interlocal agreement. And then if approved, each of the organizations would also sign a memorandum of agreement as for how they would use those funds based, based on these amounts. So go ahead and open it up for questions. I do plan to take these to the city commission tonight for their approval.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve the CFA recommendations for the 23, 2023 organizational funding.
I second it.
Okay, as we have a motion seconded, any further discussion on the topic? Hearing none, I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and I know the organizations, thank you.
The amended item, the Stiefel contract, we'll have Assistant County Administrator Sean to present that.
Honorable County Administrator, do you have a question or a statement?
Is that time to renew the agreement, the engagement services? The term of the engagement, it will begin as soon as it is executed. Go through December 31st of 2024. Page two has the hourly fees and rate schedule, and the minimum amount will be 5,000 per month. And this is for the American Rescue Plan Act consultation services with that.
We saw funds to use out of this?
Yes, sir.
And they get 5,000 a month, whether they work on it or not?
Well, we made weekly.
Okay.
So we're always talking to them regularly.
Okay.
But yes, that's, that's what they are proposing.
Sorry to cut you off. This is basically just an extension of the contract that basically expired. So we're just going to continue doing the same thing we were doing, just need a contract to replace to do that. But we do, we do speak to them every week, and they're the ones that keep up with all the changes and what other counties are doing across the country and making sure that we understand what's going on.
Is there amounts, is there an open amount that we're going for? Or is there left on the ARPA fund? Or is it, is there more funds available, obviously, for the future?
Oh, it just, it just comes, yeah, it just comes out of that. It doesn't come out, yeah, it just comes out of the pool of all the funds. It doesn't come out of our general fund or anywhere like that.
Okay, right, right.
Is that what you were asking?
Yeah, I just didn't know if there was like an earmarked amount that Ford County has or if there's, I know we have projects.
We have a balance that's left for.
There you go.
Yeah, yeah. We haven't, we haven't specifically started any ARPA projects. Yeah, yeah. We haven't, we haven't specifically started any ARPA projects yet officially except for the HVAC. And we haven't done anything like operations live for that yet. So yes, there are funds. Technically, all the funds are still available.
All right, I'd make a motion that we approve the Stiefel Contract extending the engagement-related consulting services to Ford County.
I would second.
All right, with the motion seconded, any further discussion on it? Hearing none, I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I made the same mistake this week as I did last week. I didn't make myself a package. So if you, if you wouldn't mind reviewing the upcoming meetings.
Amy's job just keeps getting more and more valuable back there.
Without Amy here, I'm completely lost in what I'm supposed to be doing. She, she does so much and it's just crazy.
Was it weird that the very first one is about people swearing at each other? All right, so we have a swearing in ceremony on January ninth at nine o'clock. There's a CFAB meeting at six thirty on Tuesday, January tenth, and that is tentative. The second regular board meeting will be January seventeenth at three thirty. The Kansas Legislative Policy Group twenty twenty-three legislative meeting is January twenty-fourth, Hotel Topeka at City Center. And then Local Government Day is January twenty-fifth, and that is in Topeka, Kansas. Other than that, I believe that's everything in front of us. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
With the motion seconded, I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.